17:15, adjustments to the agenda. We have 5.3, Program Council is going to go after Audience and Communications. And then 6.1.2 Capitol Projects will go after that. We've added 6.6 Discussion Letter from Town Select Board. And then we've added one Action Matter, 7.3 Approve Opening of Two Construction Projects Within the Construction Fund.
Should we move one of the microphones? Because we told him to put the microphones on that side.
I think we're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're fine. Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, hello, you guys.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you guys. So we got our first Program Council meeting a couple of weeks ago. And we were lucky enough to have Elaine Pickney come in. And she gave us a presentation about things they've been doing at the Supervisory Union for outcomes and indicators. It's a lot of work you guys are probably aware of. And so she brought the Program Council up to date about those things. And told us that in the future she'll be asking for some feedback from us about some of the work that they've been doing. Thinking about some of the indicators for progress and then just systems in general, how that might work with the Williston School District. So we started out with an introduction with that. Walter actually shared some things that had been Program Council recommendations that the administration had turned into some policies that they put out to the whole staff at the beginning of the year. And I think a lot of people have said that it felt like it was a real smooth start because things were kind of prepared over the summer. And they were told to us at in-service, they've been in the bell, so they're available to everybody. And then there's just been some looping back on that in terms of how do we communicate, how do we use email, a number of other areas that Program Council felt like were important for the system in Williston. And administration took that and made them into some working policies and guidelines for us. So that was good. And then we started something that we've been kind of working on for a couple of years. And we're really hoping to push it forward this year of how do we, as a body representing the district, kind of encourage and hear new ideas for improving student outcomes in the district. We've always been working on initiatives that have come to us or issues that have come to us and how can we make it work for the district. But we really would like to add an element of how do we get some new ideas, some innovation going in our district as well? And provide a district-wide perspective on those ideas. So if someone has an idea about early testing, you can get, you know, early, beginning of the year testing. You can get a perspective from, you know, all the lower house teachers, upper house teachers, support staff, administrators, you know, curriculum directors on how to make it work. So really hoping that we can take our strength as a broad body to look at new ideas and start thinking about how would that fit in to what we're trying to do as a district and what we're able to do. The other things that happened was, as you may know, we have a big initiative in our school with committees that are taking parts of the AYP program and reports and looking at what we can do to improve our outcomes even more. So things like how we differentiate our instruction, how we use our time to provide resources for planning. And so there are five committees right now working throughout. It's comprised of everybody who's working in the faculty of WSD. And a representative from each committee did a report out and got to hear clarifying questions from members of the Program Council. And we're going to kind of see where it goes from there, but we're hoping to kind of be in the loop as a Program Council about these ideas. And again, as a district-wide body, kind of give some feedback to those ideas. And then, you know, thinking about our next steps, our next meeting will be to look at the budget packets that come through and hear them, learn about them, make some recommendations and votes on those. And also, we've got a few topics for the year, but generating some other topics that people might get from the folks they represent of other things we could take up this year as a Program Council. So that's where we're at this point. We're planning to meet early next month for the budget packets. And I'll be back then to tell you more. So.
The one thing I'd add that he hasn't mentioned, Elaine came and she was there, but Chris and Kathy did a wonderful orientation for the new members on Program Council. And Elaine was so impressed, she asked if we could, I think it was a PowerPoint or something like that, that she could have a copy of it for the other schools.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the other thing is, we have, one of the other recommendations was about rotating memberships so that Program Council really is a way also to get folks who work in the district to get a better sense of the system as a whole, not just maybe what we work as individually. So part of that is, it's a three-year, recommended three-year term in Program Council as a representative, and then it rotates out. So I think this is the first time in a while we've had a lot of people coming in, a third of our group about, who are new and haven't been part of it. And it gave us a chance to kind of show what we're doing. And then also, right off in that meeting, we got some new perspectives and new voices on things which I think will be great. So, yeah, so it's good. And we're hoping to have a website that will be available as well to kind of, so people can access notes from our meetings and things that we're doing. So we're working on that.
Good.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, 6.1.2.
That's you.
That's you guys. Yeah.
Gee, we're back again. Didn't we just see you last night?
Yeah. Looks like there are more things.
That's trouble.
That is troubling.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh.
This is the most updated one you have. This is what they're talking about.
It's about pretty much the same thing.
We got this today, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This one I can read.
Could've made that print a little smaller. Here. Yeah, that'd seem better. Thanks, Josh.
Okay. So this is part of the budget process. I mean, one of the things that I think you're seeing is a little bit of a collapsing of the process to make it more streamlined. And this is actually the part that you hear about operation and maintenance every year as part of the new budget we're looking at for next year. That's why you're looking at a five-year plan.
Okay.
Okay? So it is part of the budget. We'll be talking about this more as the budget process, you know, arravels and we'll take a look at that. And also about decision packets that this, you know, document they're going to review may drive to say, okay, we have to work on certain things.
But are there decisions that need to be made tonight about additional?
There's just two things which are out of the construction fund. And we'll talk about that when we get to that's under action items and why we're bringing that tonight.
Okay.
Okay? So this is Lyle. I think you've met him before. Of course, you know that guy.
I don't think Josh has. So Josh, this is Lyle Smith. He's the Director of Operations and Maintenance.
Hi.
Josh Diamond.
So I have a little list that I just titled, "School Board Meeting Information Snapshot." And I just wanted to kind of go over some things that we have found and that we have fixed, sort of explains why we are where we are now in the budget or as far as we've spent to date. We've had some successes like Scott was good enough to point out from the kitchen that the kitchen hood, the gap between the hood and the ceiling it was mounted to was getting larger, in his opinion. Sure enough, it was pulling physically out of the concrete structure that it was anchored into. So it's been there since 1966, I believe. So we fixed things like that. Of course, we had to call in a structural engineer to see how, what the proper fix would be, and we addressed that. We've also moved forward with a drainage project that we identified with the help of Hamlin Engineering. This is in a hope that we can control the water that comes into a low-line kiva in the auditorium. We feel that the water is taking the path of least resistance and finding its way underneath the slab rather than to the drip drain that was originally installed in front of the building. So that is taking place now. It's been put out to bid. We've also had some success getting our stormwater permit application submitted to the town to become compliant with the stormwater permit we originally had for the building. I haven't heard back, but from what I can see, it looks like it's going pretty well and it was well received, pretty well thought out. It will, it'll mean that we have some maintenance items to do in the future ongoing to clean out stormwater ponds and things like that and keep culverts and things of that nature clear. But that's what we should be doing anyway. We have developed, or we're in the process of developing a plan to address the attic ventilation which is causing overheating in those areas which is leading to ice jamming issues, which then of course causes water coming into the metal roof, which it really isn't that old, unfortunately. But we have decided that it is in fact heat loss from the building and poor ventilation from the soffit and the ridge vent at this point. So we're going back and forth on what the best fix is to that problem, but we have identified it and we know where we're headed. And we're going to probably break that into three different sections so that we can do it cost-effectively and do it in a timely manner. Another thing that we've asked for from Black River Design Architects is a facility analysis for Williston Central School. And the reason for that is because we're uncovering so many issues in that building, we really feel that we need an architect to go through with me and put numbers to some of these larger projects so that we can look long-term and decide what direction we want to go in. For instance, we may look at something like the unit ventilators that we have throughout the building, which are these types of units here. They're original to the building. Many of them are very old. Many of them have been fixed, but not well. For instance, the coils froze at one point on several of the units. And they put residential radiation in lieu of the coil that was the proper coil. So they don't have the same heat output that they used to have, which is causing them to not function in the really cold weather, which causes you to block off air intake so that, you know, any fresh air is compromised. So you might choose to just replace the coils, or you might choose to look at a different technology and go with rooftops that have heat recovery. One is much more expensive than the other. But that is the sort of thing that will be identified in a facility analysis report from Black River Design. The window structures that are in poor condition, again, you may choose to change the whole unit out and not have unit ventilator there. But it's, there are a lot of variables there and they can give you those choices. Choose this option or this option, and this is the dollar figure amount associated with each. So we know what that proposal is going to cost us, so I'm sure that Walter's going to share that document with you and we'll decide if that's the direction we want to go in.
So Kyle, I have a question. So last time you were here, we talked about having hired an engineer to review a variety of things. Now we're talking about an architect firm. So these two are individual?
Yes.
Analyses.
Yes. As a matter of fact, the architect will consult with the mechanical engineers about some of the systems that we're talking about. When you get into more detail, you'll have to have a different discipline.
And I said, okay, to make questions now? Okay, so I guess the question is, these two assessments have been approved or?
The second one.
The architect one, has it been approved?
No. Talking about that.
The engineer, we had some engineering done before.
Yeah.
But that was for the drainage.
Right.
Right.
And they did look at the, they did look at the ventilation and made some recommendations for that.
Correct, yes.
So I guess, I guess I have a twofold question. The first one is, I think, first, I think it's a wonderful thing that we're doing a well-assessed review to really understand where we're standing, right? For proper budget decisions. I guess I'm just concerned a little bit because our taps continue to grow and yes, the school is getting older and older. And yes, we do have to maintain and we, as the budget process gets closer, it just becomes incredibly challenging, right? To see where we've gotten.
Yeah, this study will help you prioritize and come up with timelines.
Right. Well, and that's, that gets to my point. I guess, I'm just concerned because here we're paying for another big assessment which will take away dollars for something else. And so my question then becomes, are we bidding different architect firms to see who can give us the best price? Or do we just go straight out to the first architectural firm to say, come and assess?
We don't know what the bid is yet. We need to hear.
Correct.
Well, we're not asking you to act on that tonight either.
Right. This is just information.
This is just information.
Correct.
In other words, if we go to hire?
Yes.
Then we have to figure, okay, this is what it would cost if this person does it. We haven't done that yet. We're not there yet.
Okay.
We've just got information.
So what's the timetable, assuming we hire Black River or any other architect firm? What would be the timetable to have that report done? Would it be before this budget session?
No, that is not for sure for this budget. Because you're, when you start talking about replacing windows, replacing heater units, possibly replacing the roof on the same building, that's not a small investment.
No.
So it's literally collecting the information and then determining, okay, if we think this is a really important thing to do, what's the best way to pay for it? You know, it's not going to be part of the regular budget. It can't be. It's going to, the number's going to be too high. So, you know, it'll be like, do we have a separate article? Or do we, you know, that sort of thing we'll be talking about also. But it won't be in this budget cycle, for sure.
Okay, so we're talking about a report arguably that might come out next spring.
It'll take some time to do the study, no matter who does it, too, so.
But we're talking about two things. One is the study itself and the other is a bidding process for who we actually grant the authority to do the study.
That's right.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, you can certainly interview architects. Yeah, depending on, yeah, absolutely.
And I think the one thing where Lyle has been doing is making sure we get at the cause of the problem rather than fixing the problem and having the same thing come up over and over again. You know, such as the Equinox roof, the classroom leaking. You know, what's the cause of that leaking? You can do a lot of things and try to fix it, but if you don't really know what's going on and what is causing this, that you could be throwing money away. So I think we've had some people come in to kind of look at it to say, so what's going on here? Why is it leaking in this place and not in the other two, you know, houses which are right next to it? Why is it leaking here and not in the other two? It's the same structure. Why not? So I think we've tried to be very conscientious about finding the cause before, you know, and spending some money on just that part before we spend any more money to say, then what is the cost to fix it?
And I think that's a wonderful thing, Walter. I'm just concerned, I just want to make sure that as we decide to use dollars to identify issues that need to be prevented, that we don't bleed money that could potentially be used to solve other things.
Are there any federal grants available for, you know, like Efficiency Vermont? Would they be able to, you know, factor into this? And certain parts of it, certainly heating and ventilation is another business.
Yeah, mostly lighting projects Efficiency Vermont can help you with. They're starting to get into other areas of energy, but mostly it's lighting and we do take it.
Heat loss. They're in the heat loss.
Yeah, they're starting to get into that, but.
Well, they've been in the business for a while.
Yeah. I don't know how much this would, we'd have to, that would be something the architect, whoever we choose, would be able to help us, I'm sure.
Yeah. I thought they just did it on their own, together.
Yeah. Well, it depends on the system that your mechanical engineer picks also. If you go with heat recovery. They're not going to help you out with a unit ventilator because the technology's not terribly energy efficient. But like you say, if you go with something more efficient that they do like the technology, then that's where you start to get.
Yeah, I was thinking more about the valuation side, more than just actually.
Yeah, one thing we did, we have signed up for is Normet Kind School Energy Management. And his program is run by the Superintendent's Association. And he is going, he has us on a list of schools to come and do a walkthrough. And he does a pretty thorough analysis of your energy usage. So, and that is, I believe it was free last I knew. If it isn't, it's not very expensive and it's certainly well worth his time. You get a really detailed report of what your energy use is and where your demand charge is and what time of day that demand charge is and how you compare to other schools of same square footage. I mean, it's pretty good report. And that, that is through Efficiency, he works also with Efficiency Vermont, so.
So I'd like to also, with you on, I don't want to have to spend a lot of money on a valuation.
Why don't you continue?
Yeah. So, yeah, just moving on, some of the things we have had good success with is we're working with Boucher Temperature Controls. And he's the pneumatics expert, which is the control system, the air-driven control system in the building, which has had many issues and has caused a lot of comfort issues or discomfort. And also is, helps with your energy efficiency if you can get everything to work the way it's supposed to and have all your thermostats to do what they're supposed to do. So he's been very helpful in solving a lot of problems, figuring out why exhaust motors aren't running in bathrooms and things like that, things that are just, have needed some attention for some time. Another success we had was we converted the kitchen, which was burning propane for I don't know how many years when we had natural gas in the building. That was, that was one of the first projects, I just said that. We're switching to natural and it costs us some money, but we also got a rebate for the fuel that was unused and the savings, I think it's probably, I think, a two-year payback. So that, and the kitchen seems to be quite happy with that transition. Another thing that we've identified, and it's good news, bad news, is our fire alarm system, and I talked to Simplex today to confirm this because I checked with an electrician, but they haven't made the fire alarm system that we currently have for the last 15 years. They're no longer supporting it with parts unless they happen to have parts. They said the likelihood of us being able to help you out in an emergency is not great if you do have a failure. The good news is that we have a new fire alarm system that we installed to make the elevator compliant because the old system wasn't able to do that. There will be some costs associated with switching the old system onto the new system that is right next to it. The first best option is to just take the zones that we have currently in the old fire alarm system and then have the new one monitor those zones. Long-term, the best thing to do is continue to break those zones out into individual rooms. And the new system has that capability. It's called, it's an addressable system, which the old one is not. So the firemen would get a more specific location for each smoke detector or heat detector or whatever device is calling or going off at that time. So I think if we do it in stages, number one, we've got at least what we have now for coverage. And then in the future, we can continue to make that an even better, more accurate system. And we already have the system.
So are you saying that if there's a fire right now in the school, the firemen come and they don't know where the fire is?
No, they know, they know that it's in zone one, two, three, or four, but it's, you know, a color-coded map that we just did for them. So they'll know that the fire is in that area, but they wouldn't know that it's in Walter's office or it's in the freezer in the kitchen or it's, you know, which is obviously, the technology of fire alarms is just moves all the time.
Sure.
And so it's much better now than it was many years ago.
One of the zones is Equinox, Swift, and Voyager, and all the rooms on that wing. So they'd have to go through and figure out where is it on this wing? It's a large area, plus the upstairs above it because there is an attic there.
Is this in addition to a pull box? Like they have sensors?
Yeah.
Or, I mean, somebody can pull.
Yeah, pull boxes, that was, that's you on the way out the door, you know, alerting before the smoke detector even, you know, alerts you. But if there was nobody there to pull a pull box, the smoke detector would be the next best thing.
They get their information from the smoke detectors on location of the fire.
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
You know what zone it's in.
Yeah.
And they have to go through the zone and find out which one is.
The other problem that we have is, the building's not numbered in any, if you go through the building and kind of look around, you'll find that some of the building has a room number and some does not. And so when we do this project eventually, that's going to be part of the project is saying that it's room one through 35 or this hall and 202 is upstairs. And right now, we don't have that. So even if we had an addressable system, we wouldn't have an address to plug into that device, which then leads to your electrical devices and breakers all have to be numbered the same way. There's a fair amount of work and signage that has to occur in the building, too, which is on the five-year plan.
And the outside doors are numbered because they're supposed to be so fire and police can get to them. But the inside, well, we talked about this morning, windows and doors so that you would know which room you're looking at from the outside. You wouldn't have to do it to the building.
So there's definitely been some challenges, too. We've had some good success with a lot of these things, but one of the challenges is that I've got no dedicated maintenance staff. I have fellows that do maintenance, but every single person that works for me also has an area to clean as a custodial duty also. What this means is that when we tear into a project, at some point in the morning, they've, you know, before they can even start on a maintenance project, which is really the best time to do a maintenance project when the kids aren't there yet, they have to break away to go do that. And then at lunch, they have to break away and go do lunch duty and then do a trash run at the end of the day. It's troublesome for me to get projects done when I don't have a maintenance person who can stay focused on maintenance. Just a future reference that that's going to be something that I'm going to want to try to address. And I think that a building, or buildings of that size need some focused attention. I mean, I do a lot of the maintenance myself, but I can't, I can't be at both places and do all of it all the time. And I'd really like to continue training some of these guys to do some of the more basic preventative maintenance once we finally get all the systems working. So that's the hope is instead of going to different units and fixing them, making them functional, your trip to that unit will be to verify that it's functional and check it off a list and know where you're at. The other thing we're doing, Walter and I and John are comparing our budget in these lines to other schools of similar square footage to see where we are and then try to make some sense of that. And we'll be helping you with those numbers when we, when we get those a little bit more nailed down.
That's great.
So that's what we've been up to.
Thank you. Lots of luck.
Sure. Thank you. I just, I'd like to observe, this is probably my fourth year on the board. I don't think we've ever had a presentation from a person in charge of facilities. So I appreciate the attention that's been brought to us.
I even brought pictures.
And you have an invitation from him also.
Yeah, I would really, really appreciate if some of you who are interested would do a walkthrough of the buildings with me so that you can kind of see firsthand. And I, you certainly are welcome to look through these. Some of them are pretty self-explanatory. Some of the wiring issues that we find on a, unfortunately, fairly regular basis.
Yeah, that's.
More, yeah, more wear into like a pole light. It's 277 volts. So this is what the electrical inspectors have an issue with right now. This stuff should not be, shouldn't have any chance of it getting physically damaged by mowers and plows and things like that. This is the sort of thing that, you know, that was an old fix that we've since fixed with a new louver. This is some of the window panels that I'm concerned with that are obviously, and this is something Black River Design or whoever their architect is is going to say, okay, this whole panel should be replaced as one window unit, unit ventilator will or will not be vented there, I don't know. But the other thing is, keep in mind, this panel is asbestos contained, so to add insult to injury. But we tested for it, we know it. Another panel that's just in poor condition, some little paint issue. So, I'd love to have you guys do a walkthrough just so you can kind of get a feel for where we're at.
Maybe if we have a budget hearing, we could, I was just thinking, maybe, since we do some of our budget hearings at the school, maybe we could graft a walkthrough.
Yeah, that'd be very good. During the process.
During the process. If I may, just, I'm concerned, I feel like I'm just getting a small snapshot of the, I don't want to call it deterioration, but the depreciation of our physical plant. And being mindful that we may need some significant repairs and that may cause a need for bonding. And we're at a time of historically low interest rates. And I don't, I don't want to rush this process. rates. And I don't, I don't want to rush this process and I certainly don't want to hire an architect without a bidding process because I feel that that is very important because it can be a very costly process. But I'm concerned, I'm wondering aloud whether or not we can really afford to wait eighteen more months to, to make decisions. So I just, I throw that out there.
I think what we, and that's why we're asking you to access some of the, the impact fee money, you know, in that, in that account because what we've looked at is what are truly safety issues? And what are things that you would like to do, but whether we do it tomorrow or whether we do it a year from now, it's not going to make a difference as opposed to, no, we need to work on this one. And we need to work on this one pretty quickly. That's why we're asking, we're going to talk about that later on, but that's why we're asking for some money out of the construction fund to do that.
Right. But it's, even aside from safety issues, I'm, I'm wondering aloud whether we need to expedite the timetable to do this.
No, I understand. And I think what we're trying to do, I mean, it's very broad, you know, and I think that's one of the reasons we looked at the budget itself and said, "So how do we compare to CBU? They're very similar to our size. What does their budget look like, this budget for its maintenance budget compared to our budget?" And of course, what we find, we're under in every category.
Other schools we've looked at, we're not just, we're looking more broadly than that too.
So, and that's the upkeep part of the budget. In other words, if you've got enough money in to address the issues as they occur, you're not going to have the deterioration. But if you're kind of scraped together the money to fix different things and not fixing the things you should on a regular basis, you're going to have a problem. It'd be the same thing if you did it in your house. You know, you've got five projects and you decide, "Well, we don't, can't afford it. I'll do one or two and I'll let the other ones ride." And over time, that's really going to, you know, have a, an impact on the value and, and it's going to deteriorate. And I think what we're trying to do is put this in a perspective of what makes some sense over time. Yes, we want to be urgent in getting things done. And we also want to make sure we're handling the things we need to handle first. That, you know, we definitely identify this, okay, we need to do this right now. And we work with Bob Mason on that. So that's why when we talked to you later, we were talking with Bob on that one. And then which ones can we put off a little bit and, and we're not going to hurt ourselves, except for the interest rates. I mean, that's the other point. So we'll, we'll have to talk when we get back and discuss that.
And we're, I just really, I, my previous job was I inspected probably a hundred schools, if not more, I don't know. This is not terribly uncommon, unfortunately. When school construction aid went goodbye, that slowed progress down a fair amount. And unfortunately, a lot of schools are finding themselves in very similar situations. So I, I don't, nothing shocks me anymore, unfortunately.
I think what Lyle's been doing, having like, we had some of the caulking testing to see, okay, is this asbestos? You know, does it contain asbestos? Because as you're going to move forward on a project, you have to know what you're dealing with. So we have a pretty good idea of what some of the issues are now. So that's why we can really look at getting some accurate bids that are going to reflect what we know within the building and what we have to fix.
And the, the actual, the, the bid for the study is fairly insignificant in comparison to the cost of the work that they're identifying, unfortunately. This is the reality of it. It's not a lot of money.
Well, I agree with that. But we have a lot of things to cover.
Yeah.
So we cannot lose sight of that.
Absolutely.
Well, they allow you to plan over years.
Right. And that's the purpose of the plan. You're fine. To try to spread it out so that you're looking at a, you know, rather than having a big hit in one year and nothing the next that it's, you're pacing it out. And over time, you can fix it all.
If you do it as O and M as opposed to a capital construction project?
Or if you do a combination. We know that, that the community really does support making sure the plant, you know, the, the buildings are up to date.
Sure.
And they've always supported that. We've never had one defeated since I've been here.
We do either.
If you needed to fix something, they would support it. And so, but I think one of the parts on the bottom of this page says, "We have to figure that part out though. Which ones are we going to put into the regular budget? Which ones maybe can come out of the construction fund? And which ones do we have to look at? Maybe a future bond or something like that." And that's part of the work that we have to do.
Well, it'd be nice also as part of the five-year plan is if it was incorporated, you know, like long-term goals as far as how we keep the maintenance and, you know, if we can do it on a yearly basis. And also what's, what's the, you know, the best way to do as far as interrupting school, you know, get whatever you can done in summer and things along those lines. So I hope it's, you know, kind of addresses those, those types of recommendations too.
It sounds like you're on it.
And we've talked about things like when they do, fix the roof, it's not going to interrupt school. You know, if they do a new ridge bent and, or fix the sop, it's, it's not going to interrupt school. You know, that kind of thing, you know, like, so we've been thinking about that. You know, even the drainage project, they came out on a Saturday to kind of begin some of their work.
I guess that's part of your job too.
Yeah, it's coordination.
Coordinating.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's sort of like the, the lab project I did at the former school that I worked at. I had abated the asbestos floor tile during April and February break in anticipation that we would get a positive bond vote or we would have cement floors in the labs for a while. But there was no way we were going to be able to abate those floors and then let the construction crew start building new science labs. That worked out by the way, but doesn't matter.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Grab my pictures.
And do come by for a tour, really. I think, I think it'd be really informational for you and can see what we're working on.
Okay. Okay, so four point oh, indicators.
It's me.
It's you. I was wondering.
It's me.
All right. Very good.
So, you know, I think that Molly was talking about, what did we learn on the first cut on trying to do this kind of work? And there's probably three things I wanted to just talk to you a little bit about before we start. One is that developing indicators is not that easy. You know, the differences between what's an indicator and what's a form of assessment, which means you're doing this assessment to collect information so that you can do a better job of working with your students because you know where they are. Or is this an indicator of an endpoint? This is what after instruction, this is where the students are. And that gives us a better sense of how is the program working. So that's kind of what we looked at. The other thing is we have multiple assessments that you'll see in this that will trigger responses from the school, which is resource allocation and writing of short-term and long-term goals for students to make sure that they can be successful in their application. And that's kind of what we're looking at. So it's hard work that we have multiple assessments which trigger the work and that we have a resource framework to actually put in place when students are needing extra help. Okay? So if you remember, just that'll be helpful.
All right.
So here's our local indicators and overview of the multi-tiered system. This is not new. You have seen some of this work through either Ncap presentations. In, in the last couple of years, we've had our tiered systems of support, tier two and tier three present. So you're going to see some of the same information. So here's our grade two scores for reading and our students are at the ninety-one percentile. Indicators mean that this is a benchmark you could look at and say, "This is a good indication of how the programs are working." And how do we know that? Because when students leave second grade, ninety-one percent of them can read at the level we expect.
At grade level. This is one of the indicators that is a great indicator. We know all the research shows that if you're reading at grade level at the end of grade two, that is a really good predictor of success at high school.
And this is Ncap scores in reading, grade five and grade eight. You know, and one of the things we look at is they're both at eight percent, which is strong. And the other thing we look at is if you look at students that are one point below the score that says they met proficiency, it immediately pushes both of these into about the mid-eighties because they missed by one point. This is math results, grade three, grade five. You can see seventy-seven percentile, seventy-six percentile. Take into account the students that missed by one point pushes them both into the eighties. And this is our, the number of students who took algebra successfully. Forty-seven percent of our students who took algebra. Not necessarily eighth-grade students, the students who decided, you know, everybody starts in algebra, but you have to do the extra work to get the credit. So of the students that took, did the extra work and said, "I'm in algebra," forty percent, seven percent of them passed and got credit for it.
So what's the percentage of the entire student body?
I don't, I would say it's in probably about eighty to ninety. It's up there.
So eighty to ninety percent of the entire student body elects?
In eighth grade.
In eighth grade. Gotcha.
So is this a good metric or a bad metric?
Well, I think.
It's an improving metric.
Yeah.
Four or five years ago, that number would have been thirty-something percent. That would have been true across the whole state.
Yeah.
It used to be much more, the program was much more an elective kind of thing, like, "Do you want to take algebra in grade eight?" And now we've, you know, in the last few years come to like, this isn't a choice that eighth graders should be making. And it's not just eighth grade. I mean, it's chain-linked to what are we doing with kids in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, all the way through to ensure that that number keeps going up.
But it is elective. I just heard, didn't it?
Every, yeah, you have to choose. You can, you're in the class, but you have to choose and want to do the extra work it takes to get credit for algebra.
I see. They're all getting algebra concepts.
Yes. And depending on what you do, it's either kind of free algebra. In other words, giving you ready for algebra or you're actually taking algebra, depending on how much work you do. I taught algebra. Our success rate, well, our number of students percent that we take would be about thirty-three percent of the class. And that was in Shelburne when I was teaching, which is pretty wealthy community.
And for what it's worth, forty-eight percent is the CSSU percentage.
No, that was, oh, the CSSU.
Yeah.
Oh, could you have, oh, yes.
So we're forty-seven percent, which is not bad at all. And it's actually, we were, I was comparing our, our presentation with another principal. We were looking through that and we can see that, oh, we did really, actually, we did pretty well in this area. That other people did less and other people did more. But everybody's kind of visual of what it looks like. You, you look at your school and all the scores and like, "We're really good in certain areas and we need to work in other areas." And other schools have the exact opposite. It's like, "Oh, they're good in this area, but they need to do work in this area." Now, we just, I just thought it was interesting, just looking at that quickly. It's like, wow, this is our strength, your weakness, and we need to improve here, and this is your strength. Here's, this is a really interesting one that we're trying to figure out what to do with this one. This is, and you were just talking about, this is timed fact test, timed. It's one thing to know your facts and most of our students do know the facts. It's another thing to know within a certain timeframe. Say you have to do so many in a minute. You know, and some kids are good at that and some kids are not. So fact fluency is one thing we'll be looking at. The other thing is, what we realized is that we were not aligned to the common core expectations around this and we had just changed the Bridges program. And so the newer version is probably more in line with this than the older version. So this is something where actually the instruction and the expectations, you could say, as we worked through Bridges programs, wasn't in line with saying that we would show that we're doing really well in this area because it wasn't one of the expectations.
I mean, hesitate to even comment, but as a parent who has kids going through and have been part of the new transition, this does not surprise me in the least, given what I think the time is spent on fact fluency in the classroom.
And, you know, our question is.
It's not emphasized.
Is it a true indicator? Is it an indicator?
Yeah.
In other words, if somebody does well in math facts, does that mean you're going to be a wonderful mathematician?
What we do know though about fact fluency is it's kind of like phonics with reading. You can, you can be a good reader without having phonics, but it's, it frees up your brain to have the comprehension if you don't have to sit there and sound out each word. It's the same thing with fact fluency and algebra. So that's why this has become an important indicator. If you have that automatically, now your brain is free to consider two or three variables and ponder what to do with them and put them together. So we're, as a supervised reunion, we're paying a whole lot more attention to that than we did in the past.
I think what we've talked about and well-est in is, this is where parents can really help us. You don't have to do this by drill and practice. You can do this in a lot of different ways. And there's a lot of really good games out there that use dice and cards and things like that. We're actually working on that, but it doesn't feel like it. But you're really doing a lot of drill and practice and practicing. So we've just begun to talk about this as far as maybe parents could really support us in this area because we want to stay on higher level skills at work. There's only so much time in the day. And so I think this will be something I'm sure they're going to talk about.
Yeah, Khan Academy for the lower grades would be. Khan Academy for the lower grades would be.
Right. And we're using Khan Academy now in other programs that are more like that because we know that it's one way to get out of.
Yeah.
And, and we also have computer programs that do it really. Here's our science results. I mean, the only unexpected result we had was in fourth grade where we went down. And I can say that that was unexpected. And as of Thursday of this week, we have Stephanie coming in, who's our new person for CSSU. And she's analyzing our test scores with administration and kind of going through the categories of where do we do well and what do, where do we not do well? We, for the first time, our fourth grade scores went down. Eighth grade stayed about the same. Five points is an actual critical mass of change. And, you know, the eighth grade changed by one, but we said, "How come, what happened with fourth grade?"
I have to tell you, Walter, I am really, really disillusioned with what happened in fourth grade because we talked about this two years ago. And we went further down.
Well, we went sixty-four, sixty-eight.
Wow.
This is the first year we have seen the fourth grade put down.
Um, maybe it's the way you're presenting the data because I have analyzed that data pretty closely.
The fourth grade has always gone up. It's always gone up. For the last, I would say, three to five years, it's gone up.
Well, yeah. We can take us offline if we want to bring that information to a clearer level than what you're presenting here. But I will tell you.
This is not, you know, one of the things we have to be careful of is this is not a comparison of Ncap scores. This is an indicator score, which is different. It's a benchmark score that says, "How are we doing in this area on this day?"
But it's a Ncap score.
It is. But the difference is it's not a compare, we're not, this is not a Ncap presentation, even though we're using some of that.
Well, I, I know that, but I am not, I don't want to walk away without saying this because I am very concerned about that.
The fourth grade science?
Yes, because of how much we dipped. We dipped. And it was rather dramatic.
It is?
And it's a big concern. And I understand that we are walking away from Ncaps and I understand that it's just one indicator and it should not drive entirely the education of a child.
We're not walking away from science Ncaps.
No.
Science Ncaps are going to continue.
Well, then even more I am concerned.
The same. We will continue to see.
And, and, and I just want to say this because I really, and I would really like us to discuss this, whether it's today or in another meeting, but I really want to drill down on this. And here's a, here's a reason why. We have consistently, well-est and consistently, when we compare to the rest of the CSSU schools, we are always underperforming. And really, there is no excuse for that. Because if there is true consistency across the board in terms of how we implement education across the board, we shouldn't be trying to reinvent the wheel. We should be actually looking at what Heinsberg and Shelburne are doing because they actually outperform. They are, I can't remember which of the other two schools are. But it just concerns me greatly that, 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 that metric consistently has been going down. Why are we not doing what the other schools are doing so well?
Well, Stephanie Conowitz, the person that you mentioned, and we hired her this year with grant money. We have two years of this grant that we could hire a science coordinator, was a teacher in Heinsberg last year. Scores were fabulous there. So the person, she was one of the people who applied, she was the only person who applied. But the person who got the job is a person who had good results. And so when he says she's meeting with faculty to look at the scores, she brings a skill set that we would say represents what you're talking about.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, Elaine, and I think that's a great thing. But what concerns me is we talked about this exact same thing two years ago, deep about this. And we raised the flag and we said we should be doing what Heinsberg is doing or whatever the other two schools are. I could bring it out because I actually started typing in email. But it is, I just want to say this. I am really concerned about this because this, this bar should be going up, not down. At the bare minimum, it should be staying steady, which is not a goal we should be looking at.
The difference between Shelott and Heinsberg and Underhill, Underhill Center is they basically have one teacher teaching science.
Well, you know what? Whatever it is that we have to do, I mean, we can't have one teacher. We're too much. Whatever it is that we have to do, I mean, we can't have one teacher, we're a much larger school, but there has to be common practices that can be applied. There has to be consistency in the way teachers teach to allow us to get that bar raised.
That's, I mean, in other words, in, in Underhill, they rotate a science specialist through all the classrooms. That's how they do it.
All right, whatever it is, you know.
And the reason why they can do that, you hit it, size.
Yeah.
But, but you know what? Size should not be a limitation for us.
Unless we can get around that.
There is no excuse.
No, I'm not saying there's an excuse.
And I'm not saying you're saying that.
I'm just saying, I'm comparing apples and apples, and saying, not comparing apples to apples. That's how they're, that's how the smaller schools are doing it, because of who they have teaching them.
All right. There must be something we can do, but this has to stop.
I agree with that. I do agree with that.
This has to stop.
Well, this is the first year, just remember that, you know, 'cause our eighth grade scores went down, and they've been going up, and they've been doing well. They're at least staying where they are or improving, and this is the first time, the first time the fourth grade scores have gone down. So it isn't a pattern, it's one time.
But it's a big dip.
Yeah. The class is different. I mean, there's a lot of different factors, so what are the factors that are causing that to happen? That's what we're gonna look into. We dropped thirty something, thirty-four students in fourth grade in one year.
We had zero, zero above proficiency. That is incredible, incredible.
And how accurate is, is that, how accurate is that test is a predictor of students who are exceeding the standard or meeting the standard? How accurate is it? It's one indicator. How accurate is it?
Well, right, whatever it is, but it's an indicator, and it, it, it should be used as a flag and a point of concern.
No, absolutely, absolutely as a flag. And that's what we said. We were not expecting this. We thought our scores would go up again, because they would go up pretty steadily, especially the fourth grade.
When is this test again?
This is given in the spring.
Spring.
So.
Every year in the spring.
This person is coming on board, Stephanie.
She's.
Will we have, will we have enough time to make an impact? So that when spring comes along, which is right around the corner, really, will the kids be ready for it? It's my question.
The other thing is, is this the same students or different students?
Whatever it is, so.
Different students, so remember, we're not comparing apples to apples.
I know, I know, but it still is. Well, yeah, I mean, you, well, yeah.
I mean, we have competent teachers and, you know, here's something that they can, you know, chomp their teeth into.
That's right.
You know, so I, maybe we could get them to not necessarily rely on an outside person to come six, eight months from now, but now they can kind of get together and propose a plan amongst themselves, you know? Because I, I agree with Giovanna, we can't have this. This is, you know, pretty important material for our kids to be knowing.
She's already done the analysis.
She's done the analysis.
So she's gonna bring in the results of what she found.
When?
This week.
Will we be receiving a report?
Sure, you can see it. I mean, you know, we can tell you exactly where we need to work and what areas we were weak in. Remember, the test changes every year too, so the, the focus of the test is changing also. So it's not like you're being tested on the exact same material from year to year. They keep changing the test and changing the focus. So what we have to do is look at, what was the focus this year? You know, and what are our students' math scores as well on? I mean, that's kind of what's happening.
Yeah, I, I hear a lot of teachers saying that we're teaching to the test, but, you know, we gotta teach to something.
Well, it's a high stakes test.
So, you know, I just wanna support.
The thing is, I don't think we are testing to the test, and this is why we're getting these results. Children don't know how to respond to the test, because they have never seen the test until the day they actually take the test. That is a problem.
There aren't enough tests, and that's part of the reason that we see the kids not performing well when they're tested. In the other slide you showed us about fact fluency, right? Because they don't get a lot of tests.
No.
So, and I think they should, you know, and because the more tests they take, the better they get at taking them, and they don't have to be intimidating tests in any way, but, you know, testing grades, I feel are something that's kind of lacking until later on, and we should probably maybe revisit that as a, for just a thought.
So the, you know, the other thing we look at is that usually we don't keep test materials secretive. In other words, you're gonna, you're gonna take the bars in, but I'm not gonna tell you anything that's on the test at all, and you're gonna be in cold. I'm not gonna tell you anything you're gonna be tested on. Even when I took tests, they told you the materials. And they may present it in a different way, in a case study way, but you had to respond to it. But at least it wasn't out of the blue that it's nothing. The idea was not to try to figure out, maybe, what could we ask kids this year that we're not gonna tell them about? So that there's no way they can even think about it. You think kids would study? Do you think if they knew what was coming, they might wanna study a little bit? And the teachers would help them study to know what's gonna be on a test? Or is it a big secret?
But it's the format of the test as well, Walter. The children are not familiarized enough with the format of the test. And yes, the questions will vary, but if they do not train themselves on how to interpret the test, then it doesn't matter how well you teach, they will not know how to respond. And so that's, that, this is exactly what we talked about two years ago. They need that practice and they don't get it enough.
Well, they, they were getting practice, and our test scores, look at two thousand thirteen, that's the year before, sixty-eight percent. What we expected was that score would go up, because we put a lot of time into it. And so it has to be, what were they asked? What was on the test that they were asked that they did not know? And that's what we're gonna know on Thursday. And that's what we'll work with the teachers in immediately, to say, this is the area. So, um, one of the things you, I think you knew, and we've talked about this before, we do have, so you have data from students now about, okay, so this informs us about the kids a little bit. So we have some benchmark numbers, and now we get into the specifics of, we have a multi-tiered system of support. If you wanna look at guiding principles for interventions, in other words, what does research say about what works? It's collaboration of the people who are working with the student. It's inclusive practices means that students who are having problems are in the regular classroom, they're not separated out. It's expertise. Who's the best teacher? The smartest teacher to work with some of our struggling students? Evidence-based instruction. What evidence do we have that this kind of instruction gets results? And data decision making is, we are driven by data teams. You'll see, we have data teams at every level, starting in kindergarten, so that we're looking at data to decide, what do we do with the kids? And the other one is early intervention, which we've worked on before. We have people reaching out into the community and starting interventions early. Last summer, we had intervention program for students that weren't even ready for kindergarten, because we know this really makes a difference.
So if, if I'm a parent going into a parent-teacher conference, can I presume that my classroom teacher has reviewed this data? I mean, is this a discussion point from which a parent can have during these parent-teacher conferences? 'Cause I, I think that might be really illuminating. You know, how, how does the teacher analyze the benchmarks with my child or anybody's child, and how do they match up? What could be worked on?
I think what we, we do as a system first is, we sit down with all the three, four teachers and we review all the data with them. And we say, we did well in these areas. We didn't do well over here. How come?
But, but what about, is this happening on an individual child level?
It can. I mean, we talked about kneecaps are just data in general.
Just the data in general.
Yeah, no, you can actually, in fact, when we did the two-day of kindergarten, getting them ready, and they would actually test the students before school started, they would sit down with the parents afterwards and tell them the results were.
And are the teachers, does that happen along the, the way?
Yeah, they can, they can give the results of this data anytime, 'cause they have to do it. They have it. In fact, it would be easier for them to just say, here's what we've noticed, and here's the data that supports it, or they're doing really well, here's the data that supports it. And when you look at second grade reading at ninety-one percent, that's really high. It says that that is really working well. This is the, it's a looping kind of system, which says, we want high-quality first instruction. We want early identification of students that are struggling. We want classroom-based instructional adjustments and monitoring. We have a tier-two system saying, if the adjustments that we make in the classroom don't work, that we can bring in other supports. And then we have a tier-three system, which says a student has been identified because they have a learning disability, and they're gonna need special instruction. And the way we look at some of this is, there's a tiered way we look at the data. We have data teams starting in kindergarten all the way up through eighth grade. They meet once a month, look at stu, all the student data they have. We have E S T teams, which means it's usually house-based, where teachers, a counselor, and a special educator sit down and they discuss individual students, saying, how come Johnny, Mary, whatever is not learning? What's going on here? What do we know? And then we have a R A P S, which is called Williston Resource Allocation of People and Services program that says that it's bigger than a house. They may need some extra help for this student. What can we do? Let's, let's hear about what the problem is. Let's make sure they've explored all the different possibilities of help they can do. And then let's talk about maybe, what else do they need? And that's it for students who are really struggling. High-quality first instruction is gonna be the key. It starts with the classroom teacher. It, it's about implementing best practices in all subject areas. It's about embedded professional development on a regular basis. And it's critical when all subject areas is aligned with a common core. Those are like the basic characteristics. Early identification of students who are struggling. The data teams are the ones that really pick it up immediately. And, and everybody's given kind of like the same kinds of tests, and I think Molly talked about that, it's across C S S U. So then we look at our data, we look at how our students have said, and say, okay. And what's interesting, I saw on the charts at the elementary school, they actually track it on these big boards, where you can see the students' scores go up over time. They start here, and then you go the next month, and you go the next month, and you go the next month. And you can see it as the students are making gains. Comprehensive and balanced assessment system is used to identify students who are struggling. So we have all these assessments. We're gonna figure out who little students that really need some extra help. Classroom-based instruction adjustments and monitoring. We are working on differentiated instruction. We have a co-teaching model, which says that's really a good way to differentiate within a classroom with two adults. And we have regular formans, uh, formative assessments, which means students do an exit survey. So they're asked questions on what they were studying for that day. And then the teachers can look at it and figure out which students are, maybe didn't get it. Or did a group of students not get it? Or did the class not get it? And, and they've gotta go back to it and say, wait a minute, this didn't work. Or these two students didn't get it, the rest looks pretty good, but two students seem to be confused, and we need to go back to that.
When does that happen?
Right, usually, if it's a formative, it can be anytime, but a lot of times they use an exit survey. As people, like you just said, an exit survey, we've left. Usually when they do a presentation, they do an exit survey. Was that, you know, how was it presented and all that sort of thing? And they use that, the central office does, to adjust the kinds of presentations they do. You know, if somebody says it was off of fry, it used a lot of slides, they read off the slides. So when they get that, the next time, they may say, well, we're not gonna do that again. You know, we heard that wasn't really exciting, so we're gonna try something new.
No, I know, but at school, I mean, they would do that on selected themes, right? The exit surveys?
Formative, yeah, on cer, certain themes, especially when you're new into a new topic. Because it's the base of it, you know, the understanding. So you wanna make sure that the kids understand the basic first parts. But they can do it anytime. One of the things we found out is, it is more important to do it more regularly, because then you're, you're taking the pulse of how are they doing. Evidence-based tier-two intervention and monitoring. A B S has reading recovery and L L I, which is small group instruction. Reading and recovery teachers at second grade level, reading recovery is first grade level. Math recovery and math intervention, same kind of a, um, a program. You have math recovery is one-to-one. Math intervention is small group. And then you have the new program that you supported this year in the community, called Stargazers. And eight students are working after school with two special educators on vocabulary and, and vocabulary development. And it's great, it's a great program. It's really working well. And then W C S has supplemental reading intervention, grades four, three. And they also have math intervention, grades three, three, and those are certified teachers. And they have Spark Academy, after-school math and reading intervention, both tier-two and tier-three. Evidence-based tier-three intervention, special education. We have one special educator assigned to every house. The biggest part that you will see with that is when they plan for instruction, they make sure that students who are struggling are taken care of. In other words, they figure out, what is it we're gonna expect of them? So that they're not left out to the side, because the special educator's sitting at the table when they're planning lessons and planning units. Co-teaching and pre-teaching, rather than waiting till after, you know, especially once you've identified students, rather than waiting after the class has been instructed and then saying, now we're gonna get somebody caught up, it's like actually giving them instruction beforehand, so they've kind of got an early understanding of what's gonna be taught. And so they can participate, because they've had a head start. And it's really good for the morale and their self-confidence. Stride program, which is, I think you know, is a program in the upper grades for students who struggle behaviorally. We have a, a, a maximum number right now of ten students. And Spark Academy, you've heard a lot about this, we have seventy to seventy-five students now staying after school on Thursday for enrichment activities, which includes none of the Spark students, but everybody else who wants to sign up. And anybody can sign up. And we have intensive targeted reading instruction. That is our most successful program we have within the school, bar none. Students are making three years gain in one year. And it's coming out on a grade level. And that's really intensive.
Thank you.
So what are we paying attention to? Science.
Science.
And science. The other thing is back fluency, because if you look at the rest of the data, our data is really strong in the other areas. Our kids are reading really well, and they're doing math really well. It's science that we wanna see steady improvement. I want the science scores to be as high as the math and reading scores, simple as that. And we want our students to be fluent, but I'm a math teacher. And, you know, when you look at anything about phonics, what happens is, when you're decoding, you're not paying attention to what you're reading.
Right.
And one of the strategies when I was an eighth grade, even algebra teacher, is use smaller numbers. Don't let numbers compute the, the emphasis on what the philosophy is of what you're teaching or what the content is, because they can't handle numbers within their head and manipulate them easily. So even in algebra, you use smaller numbers. Nice to say one to twelve. I can prove any algebra theory you want with numbers from one to twelve. And guess what? One to twelve are not problems for kids who are using, right? That's what you look at. That's why fact fluency is important. And this is math teacher time. So those are two areas we are concerned about. We're doing well in other areas in the things we don't talk about, which we really do a good job. It's, if you look at the rest of this, this is only in the educational part of the indicators. It says, think, live, contribute to society, and pursue excellence in everything you do. When we heard one person presenting, it was the State Board of Education, one of the members presented with the, um, the Deputy of Education, one of the things he said is, he was the superintendent, he was standing up in front of a crowd saying how important the kneecap scores are and things like that, and a woman stood up and said, I'm not really worried about that. What I'm worried about is I want my son to be, or daughter, to be a good citizen, a good parent, a good community member who contributes, a good neighbor, a hard worker, honest, you know, somebody that will be really a contributing member of society and be special to this community. And he said, that's not on any of these things. These other factors, when they get, you know, to these, that's where that is held. So this talks about contributions to society. So what do we expect of our students? To contribute. It's not just academics. We're developing a whole child, so that when they leave here, they're really young citizens that we are very proud of.
I don't disagree with that, but we haven't expanded our school day to accommodate, I think, the increasing format. And I think the, the fact fluency is one illustration.
Yes.
Where you said, you know, we may need to rely on parents to get that accomplished. And as a parent, I don't shy away from that responsibility, but, um, I, I wonder whether it begs the question whether we don't have enough time in our day, and whether we need to be thinking about expanding our days to, to accomplish these goals.
I would not pardon you to do that. I mean, I think one of the things we've done is, um, we have expanded with students who are struggling. We have kicked them in early in the morning. We now have students staying an hour and a half after school, including at the elementary school level. And we have homework clubs at every single house from third grade on, where they stay two, two afternoons for an hour and a half each to get extra help. So we, we have expanded it for students who are having difficulty, but Spark Academy has a. But Spark Academy has expanded it, expanded for any students who wants to contribute. And if you looked at some of those videos on the rockets, I mean, all you have to do is just listen to the kids and how excited they are. And that's with our engineers. And that was, when you listen to the talk that's going on between the engineers and balance of the rockets and the wing positions and all that sort of thing, it's pretty amazing. And those are regular students.
But I'd venture to say that most of the things that that woman was looking for, our kids are getting on a daily basis. You know, because they're getting responsibility, they're getting social interaction with other kids and how to react in a group, and helping your, you know, locker mate, they dropped something. I mean, there's a lot of things that go on at school that's social, it is our society, it is how we act, it is life. So, those life skills are being taught at the school. We have, you know, we have counselors to help out with kids that have problems. So, we're already doing that, you know. And one other thing I was saying to Josh's point is, we do read with our kids at home. And, you know, and that's something you can do in math, it's all something that we can all do. When it comes to sciences, it's, I mean, I think we're kinda relying on the school to pull the, you know, their boot shoes up to teach our kids science, because we, we don't have the structure to do it. But we know when they can't read, we know when they can't do math, so that's pretty recognizable. But we really need science to be something that the school puts their teeth into.
And I think what we are about to approach is we've been doing the same thing and seeing some gains, but not the kind of gains we want. That we're going to change our approach. We're gonna pilot a different approach. With some of the houses even lower in, in upper houses to try something different. To really say that, all right, if we keep doing the same thing, we're not getting the results we want, we gotta do something different. So, we do have some ideas over we talked about on Thursday. And the next time we, the board meets, I can tell you kind of what we're thinking of.
That'd be great.
Sounds good.
But we are just gonna change direction, say, gonna do something different. And we're gonna use Stephanie, you know, to say, and if you look at that model, it says, okay, you have one or two people that are specialized, that's what they teach, that's their whole day, and that model is working. So, how do we look at that within our system and create a very simple model? Where we have people specialized, who are working with our kids too, that are passionate about science, love what they're doing, because that's the other part of it. And that passion is catching.
Thank you all, thank you all.
All right, let's move along. It's eight-thirty, and we've got a lot still to cover, so principals report.
Just so you know, we want to be the best at everything. That is our goal. And our kids to be the best at everything. So, we don't take this stuff, we don't get the scores we want, we don't take this very long to it.
There's so many opportunities from early on all the way through.
No, I know. And we're looking at, you know, I think you know that we're doing STEM and STEAM now through enrichment. And that's hitting all, STEM is science, technology, you know, engineering, mathematics, and the arts. Or STEM is without the A, without the arts in it. And one of the things I loved on one of the engineers when I was watching, because I was watching him work with the kids, his, his shirt said, engineering is math on steroids. And that's the model they're portraying, you know, out to our students. And there are a lot of, I think if you read what Julie was doing here, because she had a report in there also weird, you could see that that's a huge thrust right now. And Maker, this thing you're hearing about the university that built a building for Maker, we have Maker in the building now. At all levels, and that's what Julie's working on. So, that's all science, math, technology, to push as much as we can in that area. And every time we do after-school Spark, we want rockets, we want science involved in it, you know, always is one of the options. All right.
Thank you.
Principals report?
It's there. I think, I think this is, if you looked at the technology, or if you looked at the links in SWIFT, and listened to some of the kids talk about, there were a couple in there about why this is important, that was pretty impressive. You know, and I think that that was a, a clear message about what they think about this and how important it is. And one of, just, I'll be as quick as I can. But anyway, one of the things that came up during our, our in-service on Thursday was we had all the, the teachers sitting together sharing their technology ideas as part of Common Core, you know, and what are they doing and all that sort of thing. The thing I heard the most was they can't do what SWIFT is doing because they don't have the technology access. You know, we're talking about they, you know, they have one-on-one access all day long. And therefore, it's their notebook, it's their everything. You know, they can keep all the records, like our phones and everything else we use. It's all there, the computers, and they have that. Whereas the other teacher said, well, I can't do that activity because I don't have access to this. So, I just thought it was the first time that it was pretty interesting. And the students talking about why it was important then was, I think, pretty powerful. You'll get a report like that every month of those students.
And the feedback that they got, that was interesting, the teacher feedback. So, they submit it, boom, feedback's there.
Well, did you see how fast that girl went through the, like, Google Classroom, I moved this over here and I put it in this file over here? It's like, it was pretty amazing at how fluid they were.
So, they're constantly moving.
All right, that's it.
Okay, all right, CSSU debrief, okay. Before we forget, so next Thursday and Friday is the Vermont School Board Retreat. I, I don't know, is anybody going?
No.
You can go, okay. It's a great opportunity.
What is it, where is it?
It's at Lake Maury, and it's two days. So, it's school board across the state. And it's a great learning opportunity. And you can go for, you don't have to go for both days if you want to, you can, but I don't know if that has anything to do with it. I don't know, okay. All right, so that's one thing. So, Stephen Dale came from, he's the head of Vermont School Board. And he talked about the services that, um, actually, if they provide. So, this is a good pamphlet to use. Let's see. And he, I guess, you know, the other, the important thing to note, I don't know if you guys were there, but he really talked about how Chittens South was looked at so highly across the state. And part of their role is to bring higher level to the rest of the state. And the work that all the board members do, I mean, he really commended everybody in their, in the leadership from administration. So, that was nice. Okay, and what else? Josh, have I missed anything?
Yeah, I've got a few on my checklist. So,
Okay, go ahead.
Communications, CVU has, I think, taken a proactive approach to public communications, and they've already charted their subject matter. I know we try at least monthly to get something out. And there was talk about whether we could piggyback on some of what CVU's work product is, and there may be opportunities for that. We, I think we'll be given a link to know what those topics are, so hopefully that'll assist our, our work product on, on that front and make life easier for us in getting those out.
And there are three topics, so one was how negotiations in that process, and what were the other two?
I don't know if I got them all.
Oh, the special education process, and then data-driven decisions. So, and, and the idea for bringing it to the board is so that we'd be aware of the time it's spent on that, and it could also be used for the rest of us, the local boards.
Another issue was we need a negotiator from our board for the,
That's an action item.
That's an action item tonight, okay, so.
We'll do that later.
And then Act 153, 156, is that coming?
Uh, then we'll talk about that too.
Okay.
I think that was it. And then Molly's presentation, which got cut short unfortunately.
Yeah.
I was disappointed. Okay, FDPAC?
Well, I wasn't there.
I know.
I couldn't make it, so I don't know that I can give any updates.
Okay. All right.
I was there, I mean, one of the, we did an update of ten items for the parents, you know. And the other thing is for the, and I emailed you on it, the first time that we're letting parents write a modified decision packet. It doesn't look like the other ones. It's really sharing ideas they may have, and then we would write the decision packet. So, I'm working with Shaney, who's the chair, and we developed that and put it in there, so parents can give us suggestions directly.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, good. All right, discussion matters. So, six point one, uh, let's see, budget. So, S U purchased services. We saw that your packet would need to commit or decide that we're not gonna commit for those services.
Do we need to make a motion, or?
We just kinda have to have a conversation if we're thinking that we would not commit to that in the next budget, but we've always committed to it.
Yeah, they seem like they have sore subject areas, so, yeah.
Yeah.
No need for change, I don't think.
Okay, so we're all in support of that.
Yeah.
Good. Capital projects, so that's what we did.
We did.
Okay. Um, budget buddies, how are we doing on that?
I lined one up.
Me too.
Nice, okay.
So, Maggie Marvin has agreed, um.
Maggie Marvin, okay.
And Doris Anderson, who was with us two years ago, remember?
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, she's, she's, uh, agreed to come back.
Nice. Okay, so two.
I didn't get a budget buddy.
Okay, there's time.
Mike Kisham might do it from, you know, he's done it for the last two years and he likes doing it.
Yeah, he's really good too.
He's from the Rotary, home of the ice and farms.
Oh, yeah.
And Katie Philston also wants to continue.
Oh, that's awesome. Well, so then we're all set.
And then I have Mike Wayman, so he's a new person who has a new kindergarten.
Awesome, perfect.
Well, there you go.
So, I think we're good. So, I don't think, I don't know.
It sounds like plenty, I better not carry my friends.
I think we're good.
I was gonna say Ms. Macklager did it last year, would be a great, Karen would be a great addition if, um, if we, she just had a great analytical approach.
Yeah, I tried emailing her, but I didn't have, like, the right email address, if anybody has it.
Do you want me to, do you want me to ask Mike Kisham? Okay. Because I seen him in Rotary.
Okay, and then does somebody want to ask her?
I don't have her contact.
She's a neighbor of mine, relative neighbor, so.
Yeah, we're in the middle.
We can find it, we can find it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I can ask her too. I think I have her email. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't want.
Yeah.
Okay, budget form presentation.
Preparation?
Preparation.
Well, usually we invite the public in once, as we're starting off to, you know, we might give a brief overview, but it's really a chance for the public to, to give in. But usually people don't show up, but I mean, at least it's an opportunity.
So, we need a date.
And, and last year, if I recall, we did something different from prior years, right? Didn't we do it right after school or something? I can't remember.
I think we did, well, and, and you're right, involves the teachers, you know, also going to both schools, you know, being available, listening to what they have to say, you know, so it's both. It's the public and the faculty and staff.
Okay.
Do we have a schedule for our budget meetings?
We do, we do.
Yes, is it in the calendar?
Um.
There is a calendar.
I don't think it is, so I've got.
I don't think the forum is in there, is it?
No, it's not.
No.
Eleven twenty at Will, uh, Williston, which is Thursday. Twelve eleven, so eleven twenty is preliminary. Twelve eleven is decision packets. And then one twenty-two is final approval.
So, preliminary means what?
The overview.
So, this is, that would be after having the budget form.
Yes.
Okay, so we need to look for a date prior to eleven twenty is basically what we're saying.
Okay.
Right? Is that right?
Yeah. May I suggest after election day, does it?
That sounds great. So, and we, and you're saying we would have to do one in Allenbrook and one in Williston Central?
That's what we've done in the past, after we've done both, because.
Wouldn't it be morning, if we did?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought it, yeah.
We did the, I think we did the library, I think, the last time at both schools. I, um, that's, I think, where we had that.
I do recall doing it one year with both, but I'm not sure we've done it year in, year out.
Yeah, I think Allenbrook was in the morning, yeah, I'm trying to remember. We do so many things that, um, they all kind of run together, but, uh.
That wasn't the coffee and couldn't come in.
I, I thought, I mean, I'd have to go back and look it up, I mean, that's what I'd have to look at last year's.
Okay.
I can do that, I mean, I can get the.
Yeah, maybe look and see if we did.
All right, I'm just, uh, so. And, and I can email you that information.
But I thought what we did is, we did Allenbrook, it was for staff, it was in the library, and you were there the last time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we, and usually there's some, um, like easels and, you know, it's like, and asking people for ideas and things like that.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can't remember if it was after school or before school.
It was before school, for Allenbrook for sure before school. And for Williston Central, for some reason, I seem to recall it was immediately after school.
We did it after school once, I know we did it once, but I, I thought we had done it the last couple, because I remember the library, we had easels in the library.
Yeah, I don't remember.
So, can I recommend the week of November tenth as a timetable?
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
And, uh.
Okay, you'll look back and see what we did.
What time are eleven twenty, twelve, eleven, I'm sorry, four thirty?
Four thirty.
We're gonna get anyone with those dates, right? I guess, or shall I be putting them?
They're on the web, they're on the website.
Oh, they're already there?
Yeah, our budget.
Oh, okay, so let me read these numbers. Eleven twenty.
When, when's better Wednesday, do we know?
Yes, it's, uh, I just saw this.
The eleventh.
It's the eleventh.
Okay.
So, number, um, November tenth, four thirty, WCS, right, in the dining room, I would think.
Yeah.
Okay.
And do you want me to look up other information? Do you wanna pick a date to do the other schools, or what would you like to do about the schools and the personnel themselves?
Can we do them all together?
That's what I'm thinking, why, why can't we just do one altogether?
We have to do, I know, why don't we do double duty? Yeah.
You mean after school, that, that, it's four thirty, that, well, you could do, if you did, um, three to four thirty or something like that.
Well, I was gonna suggest actually pushing back that public meeting a little bit later, because four thirty is a rough time for people coming out of work.
Yeah, nobody can do four thirty.
So, um, you know, if we did start at three, we push that meeting back.
Actually, this is what I'm recalling. What we did after school was for teachers only, precisely so that we would get them while they were at school. That was in WCS. We did early in Allenbrook for that, because the staff is, is onsite. And then we did an after five for, for community. Yes. That's what we did, if I recall.
Do we wanna do the, the same day and try to do the whole, you know, and then?
That would be great.
Yeah.
Yes. What time would you, what time would you wanna do the, the community? Because there'll be a short break, I mean, if, if you did, um, let's say ABS in the morning, and then came to WCS and did the afternoon,
Right.
and then have the community forum that night, it might be what, the community forum is five o'clock too early, do you think?
Yeah, I was thinking five.
Yeah, I would say six or five thirty or six.
Yeah, five thirty, yeah.
I would say six, just because people leave.
Six is dinner time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's dinner time. Is that good or bad?
Is that good or bad?
I don't think they're gonna come. I think we're eating dinner.
Yeah, let's do five thirty.
So, five thirty? So, what's the difference between five thirty and six?
That's all random.
I know, I agree.
Half an hour.
All right, so, so we're talking about date, Walter?
Yeah, good boy.
This is, um,
The tenth?
I think we said November tenth. ABS early, who wants to do, I mean, I can get stuff ready for you if I just know who's gonna be there. And I can, we're talking probably about, um, seven thirty, something like that at ABS.
Okay, so seven thirty, I can't do early on Thursdays.
I can't do early, I teach at eight thirty.
I might, I don't have anything on my calendar, so I could block it in.
Okay.
So, what time?
Seven thirty.
Like seven thirty?
Seven thirty, that actually, it's great.
Yeah, you're, you're early off to work anyway.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh,
And then?
ABS teacher.
And support staff.
And I'm happy to do, um, after school, that same day.
Okay, so that's WCS.
WCS, that would be what time, maybe?
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock.
Yeah, and I can do that. Yeah, and I can do that.
Or three, around three, three fifteen. Can you do that one?
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
So Deb and Joanna.
Parent.
And then Josh.
And Deb.
And then Kevin, do you wanna jump in?
Which one are we talking about?
Either one. Do you wanna go with Josh in the morning?
Yeah, how about Kevin?
Poor Kevin?
Eleven ten.
We'll put Kevin in the early morning, okay.
Put Kevin with Josh. Yeah.
Good.
I mean, we can check all this out and see, you know, make sure it's okay.
Okay. And then we're going to come back for five thirty.
Five thirty.
Okay. For the community.
And that we all would try to be there, right?
Yeah, we should be there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm available with that.
That's good.
And we said community five thirty, we said?
Five thirty.
Okay.
And we have the questions and all that, so we'll duplicate, you know, everything we had last year, and the easels, people can write their thoughts and all that sort of thing.
Okay.
So three thirty, cover time?
Three thirty, uh, three.
Three?
Three hunk.
Three.
Yeah, where?
Williston Central.
The dining room is normally where we would do it, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
The same thing, easels.
Yep.
You're going, are you going to that one too? At three? Were you gonna do that?
Yeah, yeah, I'll do Williston at three and then the community, and then we've got Josh and Kevin doing the early morning.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
All right.
Okay, great. Okay, policy. Um, so basically, um, Kevin, you're gonna meet tomorrow?
Well, we met already once and we just kinda went over some fairly, uh, made some minor changes to how we approve uh for how we uh allow parents to be in school volunteering and it was, you know, just to kinda cover our bases and reduce our risks and just a little different wording. It was uh things that were already addressed, just gonna be tweaked.
Yep.
Well, it's all in the packet, so we already saw it, yeah.
It's all in the packet, so any feedback for Kevin? I thought it looked fine.
No, I think it looked fine for me.
More than fine.
Yeah, I thought it was a little overboard, but, you know, I think.
Well, bring that up tomorrow, because they did talk about that, but there was too much information.
I, I, they did. Yeah, okay, good, so, yeah.
With the statutes and everything. I mean, you're kinda doing that work, so I would expect you'd bring that.
Yeah. I did, I'll bring that.
Yeah.
Good job.
Okay. All right, so we're set on that. I'm gonna keep moving. Okay, so six point three, um, okay, this is, we talked about this at CSSU.
Yes.
It's, um, if you remember that all special ed services are now at the supervisory, um, office.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
The one thing that's not is support staff. Um, and what they really found this year is that managing, again, they're managing the five schools and billing out and billing back. So they're interested in maybe changing the recommendation that they would be employees of Chittenden South Supervisory Union. So they wanted feedback on that.
Hmm.
Um, they met with the um support staff, two support staff, and they kinda went through the list of concerns that they had in terms of being um employees of the district as opposed to the school.
There's two employees that fit that category, is that what you said?
And. No, no, these are, these are two, um, of the union reps for support staff, so they met.
No, there's a lot.
Okay, how many support staff are you talking?
Um, quite a few.
Yeah.
And so Elaine and Cindy met with them and felt like they could address all the concerns.
Mm-hmm.
So that was the feedback that we got tonight.
Okay.
Um, and the idea is that eventually everything should be at central office for special ed.
Oh, this is all special ed still?
Mm-hmm, these are support staff that we get reimbursed for.
Okay. Special ed support staff. Okay, all right.
So the feeling was, um, working in their local schools that a lot, that would all change, their paycheck's gonna be different, um.
Yeah, yeah.
But I can see some benefits, I mean, if they are supervisory union, if a student moves, they're still an employee, there might be other positions.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, it makes sense to me.
Well, for some reason, I seem to recall that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but at some point you mentioned that you personally valued having the ability to hire at the local level, right?
Hmm?
Yeah, I don't think that would change.
I don't think that would change either.
Yeah, that's not gonna change.
Oh.
No, not.
No, because they're hiring for students that they know, and there's a special ed administrator in each building, so.
Right.
How is it?
Oh, sorry.
That's, um, that should all continue.
Okay. Well, my concern is there are, I, there were promises made about things won't change, but there are no policies in place that memorialize that. And, um, we had made a decision as an SU last year to allow the, these employees to be for local school loans. Um, I understand there's some burden on the central staff to do the accounting of that?
It'll be on Walter's staff too, if you keep them at the local district, because Walter will have to bill the SU for those, um, parents who will have a Williston colored check.
Under.
The state requires us to do one service plan for the old SU, one special ed expenditure report for the whole SU, so we'll have to report it like it's at the SU. So we'll have to work on how to get all that money in the one place.
Well, it it's it's being done this year, so there's, there's, there's a system.
Uh, no, it's doing a half step this year. We only brought the licensed staff to the SU this year.
Right.
The parent educators and the supplies, the equipment, the tuition expenses off the local school.
Okay, s- s- okay, it was my under, I was under the impression that we were implementing this year, this change.
Only the licensed staff.
Or at the central office, support staff is billed.
Okay.
And I think the difference from when the CSSU board made that decision is because the interpretation of the law changed where they thought there was an option not to do it, and that's not true. At least the 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 faculty, it's not an option not to do it, 'cause they were talking like bill back, you know, we'll just bill it back and you can keep the people there, and they said, no, that's, that's not what the law says. You can't do that, and that's what changed the discussion.
Understood. I I guess I I'm, and if there were policies in place that gave deference to our local school administrators about uh decision making, uh evaluation, I feel more comfortable, and and maybe it's only symbolic at the end of the day, but um I I worry that we are losing autonomy um on some very important decisions. We, I think our school district in particular has been a leader in special ed.
Yes.
Um, and I don't wanna lose the flexibility uh that we've enjoyed to the benefit of our students, so, um, you know, until those policies are there, personally, uh, I wanna continue to have the payroll responsibility, uh, if if it memorialize some of those areas of discretion, I feel.
And you're talking about, it's just procedures?
Yeah, but I'm not sure, what kind of policy?
Well, I I'm not sure, I I'm not sure. A a policy probably, because I think it it represents a school board uh decision.
Yeah.
The employee, yeah. Same, same, like the policy.
The policy being that our school district administrators make the hiring decisions uh for these parents.
So and you want a policy that at least spell out some of the more important points?
Yeah.
But then if you, if that was in place, you'd be willing to, to support it then?
Yeah. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, and from my perspective, quite honestly, I don't know that I can even make an educated op- give an educated opinion, because I don't know what the pros and cons are.
Mm-hmm.
So. Like, I mean, from a.
I I think.
The concerns were the same as the staff, the um certified staff, so it was about seniority, you know, how would that look, um, what was the other one, um? Supervision, who would supervise?
Supervision, oh, two bosses.
Two bosses.
Things like that.
But again, Megan and Elaine felt like they could, um, answer that.
Well, I think on the flip side, you know, if we do go and give them the ability to manage these, you know, people, if we don't like how they're managing them, we can probably just not sign up for their services and do our own way.
Well, no, that's, I think that's, that's the difference, that, un- unless there's something in place, arguably, the CSSU can make those decisions. That's the thrust, that special ed's gonna be done from the CSSU level.
So, but if we don't wanna participate in their services anymore, then we shouldn't have to.
I don't think we're gonna have a choice.
Yeah.
With special ed, the legislature's said the SU has to uh move special education to supervisory union.
The license to us.
Uh.
Everything.
Our understanding now, as it's unfolded, as Josh pointed out, is everything.
So why are we having this conversation?
Exactly, so why are we having this conversation?
Because I I feel it's important that we do try to retain some local control.
I see.
And I think the way to do that would be to have policies in place that still allow our administrators to make those hiring decisions.
Or another, but that could, you know, one of the things I look at is if, just some, even if it were a memorandum of understanding.
Yeah.
Said, in this move, this is our understanding as a group, that this, these are the rights that the locals reserve, you know, things like that. Um, you know, I think one of the issues that they've talked about is just um having the flexibility of moving our staff around, because that lets us cover the kids if we have absences and things like that. I know it's a billing issue, you know, but we've talked about having the flexibility to do that and then recording, 'cause we have to make projections of regular ed and special ed billing. And so you make your projection, you make the adjustments at the end of the year, I think that's one thing we have talked about, that we can do that. And that's probably our biggest, I mean, there's other things, but that's our biggest concern. If there were a memorandum of understanding about what does this mean for the supervisory union and the locals around maybe some of the key points, that might do it.
Yeah, flexibility about, you know, either uh request for changing, you know, a person who's working with a certain uh student because of whatever reason or, yeah.
Yeah. Right. And that might help actually strengthen it, you know, because now everybody's on the same page and it's been clear about what does it mean.
That's, that's definitely needs.
Maybe some of the details worked out around that, that that might make it a stronger agreement.
Yeah, and I think when your hand gets forced by somebody else, then you forget about the fact that you need to have some negotiations or there should be some type of a agreement.
Yeah.
Other than just.
So that's why, I mean, you call it policy, though, if it's, if everybody has the same memorandum of understanding about what are the rights of locals, what are the rights of CSSU, I think that, from, in my point of view, that would be okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, as as long as it's a binding document, that's my concern.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so they're gonna talk about it at the board's chair meeting.
It's not easy.
And then we'll see it again, I'm sure. Okay?
I think the, I can just tell you, I think the concerns that I had originally in talking with Mike and, you know, them listening to what some of our concerns were about flexibility and hiring and movement of parents and all that sort of thing.
I mean, it sounds like a lot of advantages.
Yeah, and I think the, any concerns we have, I think that um could be worked out.
Yeah.
I think it is good to have some kind of a document that says what what was worked out, but I think it could be worked out.
May I, on our behalf, raise the issue with the CSSU?
Absolutely.
Is that okay?
You may.
Yeah, bring it up with Kevin there, in the chair meeting. Okay, let's go on, um, so board's corner, any topics for board's corner or?
Yeah. Can I raise the issue of, um, uh, Mr. McGuire's, uh, you know, disagree?
Well, that's, that's on there, so let's stick to board's corner, so.
Okay.
No comments.
Eddie, we have enough budget buddies?
Yes.
Any thinking of anything else? Um.
Um, maybe it's a good opportunity to just, you know, let people know that budget season starts anew and that uh these uh
Yeah, that's good.
sessions are about to um come around and come join us.
Could you do it?
Sure.
You have it, it's right here.
Well, the the dates are there, I mean, you've got the.
Yes.
Sure.
Oh, just give them all the dates. Hey, you're looking for somebody to do boards.
Absolutely, I can do that.
Yeah, okay, you'll do that?
So now we have, we have, these are the dates, right? I guess I'll send it out for you before I send the dates, so it's all.
That's good. But wait, just the one date, right?
No, I'm saying, but we know, but we know when the the board's gonna be meeting is, you know, Williston.
Oh, you're gonna put everything in? Oh, that's true, yeah.
For all the dates, so that you can invite them to all the dates, and I'll, I can finalize this date as quick as I can.
Right, yeah. Great.
Okay.
Which day, eleven ten?
Yeah, eleven ten.
I thought we already have.
'Cause you.
We've gotta check.
Well, I wanna, I wanna check the dining room, you know, is there anything special going on at school? Is it a major plane or something going on that we brought?
Oh, oh, I see. Okay, alright. Now, and we want this communication to go out how far in advance, 'cause we don't want it to be so early on that they forget, but we don't want it so late that they can't get childcare, right?
Well, I think, I think there's a, uh, the purpose of this one is just to invite the public.
Yeah.
Right.
Parents to be involved.
Yeah.
You know, and then we can, in the battle and all that, we can still reiterate and put more dates in.
Right. Okay, so I guess I'm just trying to wait, so shall I aim for this to be published on the sixth of November?
Sure.
Or is that too late?
I think great.
I think that's good.
No, I think that's good.
Okay, all right.
Perfect.
Okay, and Joanna, I would throw in there that there is an open board seat.
Thank you. Open bo- oh, okay.
Um, an open board seat, because they need to get their petition, um, by January.
Okay.
So.
Yes, okay.
I'd put that in.
All right, so but, so, okay.
Right.
Yeah.
November.
I'm just wondering if one will get lost in the shuffle, that one particularly. 'Cause maybe we can do a quick one.
What do you think, yeah? Do one later.
After that, just for that.
Do you, I wouldn't know if it's interested, any of the budget buddies?
One of mine, and mine, mine knows.
Karen McLeod, I think, had raised her hand, she would be phenomenal for that.
That'd be good.
That's why I was trying to send her an email.
Well, I'll touch base with her anyway, and, you know, we need to make an open invitation anyway.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, so then we're agreeing this will only be for um budget sessions, and then we'll do a second follow-up, maybe the week after that, about having an open seat. I just think the message would, one of the two will get lost, yes.
Sure. Too many, okay, all right.
Different subjects, all right.
All right, good. All right, let's go on to, so facilities committee, Vinnie Crosson? Mm-hmm. So.
Yeah.
We talked about this during the retreat, I remember, um, last year, um, in the spring, and I know that, uh, John Turco had done some work on, like, what are the projections out of Vinnie Crossing and
Six point five. The numbers. Mm-hmm.
And they weren't saying that it's gonna have a huge impact on schools, is what they said at that time.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's a lot of houses, I've driven through it, I mean, there's a fair amount of houses, but it's not the whole, it's mostly apartments, really.
Yeah, it's one and two bedroom, yes.
Yes, a lot of them.
And so I think at that time the board had said, we didn't think we needed it, 'cause we were saying, do we need, um, you know, a committee to at least look at what happens if we start getting more students? We're close to capacity, we don't have a lot of room in the buildings.
Hmm.
So the question is, you know, what happens if the population starts going up? Should we have a committee that's at least kind of looking at possibilities to be ready?
Mm-hmm.
I presume we're gonna get outdated census data.
Yes, and part of the process, right? Bill Smith, you'll do it?
No.
Uh, yes, uh, no, I don't know.
He's not, he's retired.
Uh, there's another organization doing that, yes, you will get updated moments, sorry, yeah.
Okay. So we can look at that.
Okay, so.
Let's look at that one.
Okay, Josh, six point six, letter from the town.
Okay, so we received an email from the town manager, um, indicating that the select board at some point in the future might take up a resolution that seems to be floating around in some of the other communities. I actually have a copy here that I think was done by Colchester, I don't know how they voted on it. But essentially the issue is, in light of the increasing property tax burden to fund education, uh, there's, um, greater political pressure to make some changes, and this resolution addresses some specific changes, including, um, statewide teachers contract, a demand for no new unfunded state mandates, and evaluation of a cost shift in social service delivery to the education fund, changes to income sensitivity thresholds to encourage more stakeholder participation, uh, more efficient governance, uh, structures. Um, so the the s- the select board, I think, or, um, the town manager wanted to give us the opportunity to comment on this, whether we want to is a whole other ballgame. Um, I had, my, I'm on an individual basis, I'm planning to meet with several select board members to get an understanding of where their thinking is on these issues.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, not as a member of this group, but just in my own individual capacity, but I just thought we should. I wanted to raise this as to whether or not we wanted to take a political position on these, I think, somewhat controversial proposals, um.
Yeah. As a board.
As a board, and I'm not recommending that we do, I'm just throwing it out there.
I disagree, I feel like it's a long list, and we need to go down to Mulcair and address that, address the issues that way, I think, to just sign a blanket, endorse a blanket checklist. Um, it's bigger than that, it's complicated.
But isn't that exactly why the, um, the the select board is actually raising, um, it as something for us as the school board? Uh, to give our opinion of how we feel about it, or our concerns about it?
Right, but I think, I mean, I don't know, I'm uncomfortable as a board saying that we, um, would support the list, I mean, I think.
Yeah, and and I I don't think we were necessarily being asked to support this list, but as to whether or not we have.
Right.
Right.
I mean.
We certainly have probably some of the same thoughts on many of those.
I I mean.
Well.
I think it would be difficult for us to all agree upon that, and I don't know that we need to bring that in, I feel like it's like a political statement.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
And, you know, uh, sure, we have a lot of work to do in the state, uh, for resolving our issues and, uh,
Mm-hmm.
I think we should concentrate on, you know, our issues, and I think that that could, you know, it would be hard for me to endorse.
Yeah.
Endorse that also, um, as a approach, I would agree with.
Wait, so maybe I'm not understanding this, because, um, what we got from, from the email that you sent, that got sent to you by Rick, were the two different proposals that they are looking at, right?
I agree.
And so when I take a look at these proposals, which are two different routes to go in terms of how, uh, education funding will take place, right? So, is 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 it to say whether we agree with one or with one or the other, or what? I guess I don't understand, what's, what, what, what is this for?
I, I think they're just giving, the town manager wants just to give us the opportunity to comment on this important, arguably important issue. Um, I mean, I would agree that we've got a problem with how we fund public education and the reliance on the property tax, whether these are particular solutions I would endorse. Uh, I I agree there's a big problem out there, we need to work on it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure signing onto this res- Uh, I, I agree, there's a big problem out there, we need to work on it, I'm not sure signing onto this resolution is the solution. Um, and I know we've got a lot of work ahead of us to do two things, from where I sit, one is to ensure our kids get a quality education, and we do it at a price that's respectful to our taxpayers, and regardless of how Montpelier chooses to, uh, allocate the responsibilities of public education funding, I, I think our job still remains the same. We've gotta ensure we got a good product for our kids and, and do it in a way that's respectful for the taxpayers, and, and, um.
So basically, whether we give our opinion or not, will make no difference.
Uh, I think it could make a difference, if, if there was consensus amongst us about what we think would be good public policy, I think voicing that would be appropriate, for whether we have that consensus and whether we wanna take on that politicized debate in this form, um, I'm not sure that that is the most, um, effective place to do it.
I see. I see, thank you for clarifying, okay.
That, th- those are just my personal opinion.
Thank you.
When I look at some of the suggestions, and, and listening to the candidates for governors, I, I haven't, um, I've heard some suggestions, I don't know if I've heard a solution that really says, like, does consolidation save money, if so, how much?
Yes.
You know, I mean, I've heard about it, and they've poured money into trying to do it with consultants, but the question is, if you do this, how much are you gonna save? And I haven't seen anything that proves that doing one of these steps yet is really gonna save money. And it's a lot of money, it's not a little money either.
It's a lot of money.
And it's probably not gonna sway anybody to vote for you, but it's gonna sway a lot of people to vote against you, in my opinion, so it's, they're not addressing it.
Yeah.
And there's, and there's fundamental questions, I mean, we support local schools because it's, it's our kids, but it's also part of the democratic, uh, institutions that we, we come to accept in Vermont, and, uh, are we prepared to make a radical change, and how much money will that save us if we do?
Well, we have made the radical change in Williston, you know, we, we don't have that little town school, you know, I mean, we've got full classrooms, we've got a lot of students, and, you know, we don't have eight students to one teacher, uh, like some of the other small towns have, so, you know.
Yeah, but it's a scale.
But we're, we're living the, not really the Vermont small-town dream.
But should we be dictating or recommend, recommending a solution for those small towns who don't have the benefits arguably of our population base? Should we be telling?
I don't think that's my law, you know, I mean, dealing with cards on deck, and, uh, I think that, that we can vote for whatever, whoever we feel is gonna make changes that we feel are the right changes to be made, but we should be focusing on what we have here as directors, and making sure our students get the best they can get for the bucks that we get.
I think the board and the superintendent are definitely gonna have, as they kind of process this whole issue in the legislature this year, that there's gonna be a lot of opportunity to talk directly to representatives to say either what their proposal, you agree with or don't agree.
At that meeting we met in October, Rebecca Holmberg talked about the disadvantages of the small school, if you've got one man teacher, and it doesn't work for your child, you know, it can derail the career.
They can consolidate at the time they want, they've lured against consolidating them many times, so it's their choice.
Yeah, but she brought, she brought up a lot of, and her, have you looked at her PowerPoint that she, Elaine sent that to us, if you look.
I watched that PowerPoint.
You know, you've got Chitting County up here, and then you just have all these struggling school systems, and, you know, it's our responsibility to, I feel like, to make the state better, you know, it's not just about Williston.
Well, they have their, they have their board of directors, they can choose, they've been given the option to consolidate the path, and they've chosen not, and some have chosen to consolidate, so.
Yeah. Right. But we went all Vermont, needs to do well.
Well, that's right, but it's Vermont, and, uh.
Alright, we need to move on.
Okay, let's move on, sorry, okay, sorry guys, oh, distracted here, um, seven point O action matters, okay, we need somebody to sit on the support staff negotiation committee, um, anybody interested in that?
I.
You don't have to, you do, you do your duty, so I think, I'll do it if nobody else wants to.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to pass on the time.
Okay, alright, I'll do it.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you for doing that.
Alright, so.
Thank you.
There you go, oh, we need a motion, alright.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint, um, um, Deb for, uh, to be the representative for the support staff negotiations committee, at Williston.
Okay, second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, okay, okay, um, and then we need a motion for the level three field trips.
So moved to approve the class three field trips, which seem to, yeah.
To Washington?
Uh, I, should we have, I, I do have one concern with the, yeah.
Okay, let's make a motion, and then we'll do it up.
Oh, okay, oh, to discuss it, I thought you said approve.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll make a motion to discuss the level three field trips.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Discuss or to?
To.
Prove.
Oh, sorry, to approve?
Yeah.
I just wanted to discuss it.
Okay. Go ahead.
So the, there's one, uh, house that wanted to bring the whole house, and I thought that that was out of what everybody else was doing, and felt that it was not something that I would support, uh, because I felt like it's kinda out of what other people are doing, plus, I don't feel great about, uh, being responsible for fifth and sixth, at least fifth and sixth graders being away for such an extended period of time in a large city like Washington, and don't feel comfortable with the exposure that I would be having, so I feel, you know, good about the eighth grade ones, but the fifth grade, that's, that's more.
Can you give us something inside out?
Sure, it's been going on since about nineteen ninety.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, it's SWIP, and they have done this because it's part of their, their learning activity, and, and it's tied, everything they do down there is tied into what the students have chosen to study, so they have to go to an original source while they're there. Um, you have a ratio of three to one, or three students for every one chaperone, they've never had a problem with it before.
But not the trips.
It's their culture and has been for years. So, and, if other fifth and sixth graders wanna go to SWIP to be in that, because other teams don't offer it, they can't, they just have to apply and meet the academic, um, regulations and stipulations that SWIP puts in place. So if any other fifth or sixth grader, any other house, said that this would be a great thing for my child, because, they can apply, and if they have space, they can go. So that equalizes, it kind of.
Yeah.
Well.
Still not comfortable with the rest.
I agree with, I, I, I am in complete agree with you, I think there has to be consistency in the practice, so I, I, I agree with you.
Although we've been doing this, it, it feels not, you can.
Yeah.
Um.
I agree with the sentiments, Kevin, and, uh, but in light of the fact that this has been going on for such a long time, uh, I feel like I, and it hasn't been a problem, um, if it was a problem, I think I would, um.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. And look at their numbers, look at the number of people that are going.
I know, I know, I just still, um, just takes one, you know, I, I don't like to be reactionary, you know, um, so maybe we've just been lucky for the last fourteen years, nineteen, twenty-four.
I'll be honest with you, I, I feel like a lot of people use that as a family trip, you know, so if it is a fifth grader, they may use it as a trip, and I've been on that, where I've seen fifth graders get so excited about what they're learning, what they've studied, and that's gotta carry forward, you know, all the way through eighth grade, I.
The, the one thing I would say is, um, we're lucky there's any trips at all this year.
Yeah.
Um, they almost disappeared completely, uh, teams didn't wanna do it, um, so we've been working, we have centralized a lot of processes, there are going to be a school-wide, um, behavior contract for students and families. There'll be a school-wide contract for chaperones about what the expectations are, and it has been, and SWIP has more experience going on this trip, and has done it more times than anybody else, and we're using their format to help the other teams plan. We're sharing buses, we're going to the place where SWIP has gone, because they know the bus. So we're, we're using everything that they have discovered there to follow for the other houses, so they're kind of leading it, and, uh, basically Liz Neill is the one that organized the whole trip for SWIP last year, and she's been organizing it on behalf of the school to get everybody to work together, and they are working together, if you notice, we changed the application process, and they sound very similar.
From an equity perspective, notwithstanding the grade issue, um, I, I like this, I.
Less fundraising, uh, for teams, and, and less fundraising for Williston in general, they consolidated all of it, everything they could.
Yeah.
Is there a financial commitment from us for this?
Oh, no, it's not a lot. It's like three thousand five hundred dollars or something like that.
I, I'm just not comfortable with, with, um, like, the fifth and sixth graders, if it was seventh and eighth, I'd feel better, I just don't feel comfortable with the fifth and sixth age groups, just, um, I've, um, just, uh, maybe I'm an overprotective parent, but, um.
And I'm not disagreeing, I don't think I would use approval of the trips at this point in time, 'cause we've worked really hard to even get these to be in existence, and really, the only one that probably would have been existence, SWIP, the other ones would have disappeared. And so, they've been leaders in doing this, if we wanna have a disagreement, I mean, because we're gonna have to work on this again, this is not a done deal and the problems are solved, we're really gonna have to study what's going on, and it may disappear anyway. I'm serious, that, if we can't get at some of the issues that are out there, then, um, it may look different in the future, so I would, I would hopefully say for this year, because the teachers have worked so hard together, they have shared their resources openly with each other, they've worked together on committees to do this together, and to plan together, that, it's the best we've ever seen, as, as far as everybody working together for a common cause.
So they've already planned this whole trip?
Pardon?
They've already, they've planned this whole trip?
It's all planned, they, they've had, had to put the deposit down or lose the rooms, you know, we've already lost part of it, they've split the trip into two parts, two teams are going each time, they're shared.
Alright, well.
So, I mean, and I'm not disagreeing that maybe we should have that discussion, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
It's a little hard to have it right now, they've done so much work.
Alright, well, you know, that's, that's not putting you in a fair position, but, uh, I feel the pressure of the gauntlet now, you know, I don't know if you put it that way.
You probably called it correctly.
Not making decisions like this makes me feel really good inside.
Well, they are a part of the program, I mean, and as Walter said, it's up to teachers to wanna do it, and.
That'd be great if I was asked this question before everything was planned and committed to it and everything else was done. So maybe we can have this discussion.
We probably will, because as I said, it's really up in here, um, and either it's, it may have to be taken over versus literally a school program, and when you're talking about, you know, literally a hundred and thirty kids going for something, the potential, that's a lot of planning. I think we have done.
Yes, it's a lot of planning, it's a lot of time that could be spent outside, it's good.
It's also, but they are going to the science museum, I mean, it isn't, it's truly an academic adventure.
Yeah, it is, it's a great, I, 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 you know, think Washington's.
But the only school that has, except for like Essex Junction, Essex Town, places like that, they have a trip.
Yeah, and high school, they try.
And compared to some of the other trips that have come before this, this, this is much more academically oriented than others, so I'm pleased.
Exactly. Yes.
Yeah, no, it really, it is a, a true adv- I've gone on it before.
Okay. Yeah.
It's a true adventure, and I went back with my family afterwards, because you learn so much, it's amazing, you can't see it all, so I took my family with me afterwards, and we went down again.
And the other thing I'm gonna add is that once they get to see you, the trips are much more expensive, and this is a really reasonably cost trip.
I have no problem with the trip itself, I just have a problem with only one house bringing the five sixes, and I know that they can apply, but, you know, it, it, really, all things said, it's not equitable.
It's not a change, I mean, if, we were saying that it's a change now, that's a change in practice and it's never been that way, I, I don't have any problem with that, it's not, I mean, this is a discussion that we'd have to have, and we wrote a memorandum of understanding, um, that says what we will support, and it said, as long as other kids get a chance to apply, that, and that we notify them that they do have that, that we would say that that would be acceptable at this point.
Yeah.
We can write a new memorandum of understanding if we even have the trips.
Alright.
Alright.
Okay. I'll move some pictures.
Aye.
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 Aye, you sure?
For the chair.
Okay, alright, so those are approved, okay, how about a motion for, oh, wait, seven point three, the two projects for the construction.
Alright, the reason we are bringing these to you now is because these deal with safety, and that's why we want to act on these now, I mean, I think that you heard Lyle talk about some of the, first of all, we, we had a complete gym inspection done, and the things that were uncovered is we have no safety straps for the basketball backboards and hold them in place, um, in case something ever let go, we have no, um, we have old winches that aren't even in the category to be able to hold the weight that the basketball hoops, you know, and that whole assembly weigh, um, we have, uh, we are, uh, limit, we don't have limit switches to stop, you know, the thing from moving back and forth and all that sort of thing, and the bleachers, the welds on the bleachers are cracked.
This is in WCS?
This is WCS and the gyms, those are the older gyms, and those are, the other gym isn't used in the same way, this is for everything, and so, those are all safety issues, and that's one of the reasons why we're asking for the twenty thousand, that is the bit, it's twenty thousand dollars.
So, so just, the scope of work is those four items you just mentioned, the backboards, the winches.
The safety straps.
Uh, and the welding on the bleachers.
Yes, and that was, and that was done by, uh, there's very few companies in the state that actually even do this kind of work.
Okay.
Now, didn't we, why do I remember that somebody actually donated the bleachers to WCS?
No, that's for the, uh, the auditorium, it was, they were donated by a parent, those are the risers, the risers were.
Oh, for the chorus.
The chorus, those are donated, this is all the ones that are pulled out of the wall and so forth, and so, it is a safety issue, um, that's, that's one of the reasons why Bob and I and, um, Lyle and John talked about this this morning, the other one, so that's one of them.
Just one quick follow-up, is there any budgeted items other than these safety issues within this twenty thousand dollar budget increase?
Yes. No, these are all safety, the other one is what you've been hearing about the electrical, I mean, we have uncovered things like the parking lot lights, and we, you know, where they put the wire through the pole instead of underground and things like that, um, there are other safety issues, I think you began to hear about the alarm system, that we should be really switching over the alarm system, and, um, there's also some of the wiring things you saw in those pictures.
Right, so can you give me, I don't, I don't, I don't feel like I have an itemized list here of what is being proposed, other than just a budget item, so can you give me a laundry list of what this is supposed to be fixing?
Um, uh, I can tell you generally, because, I mean, there is a whole report that we got, that was from, uh, safety inspections, so the wiring problems.
So how come we don't have a copy of that report?
Because we didn't know if you could even, you wanted to look at it.
Well, I, what I'm concerned about is your comment to us saying there's safety issues, I totally respect that, but we don't even have, you, you're saying approv- appropriate twenty thousand for gymnasium, fifty thousand for electrical, I feel like I gotta understand what we're appropriating for.
Well, and, and, and let me just add to that, I also have a concern about this, you know, lately, we've been approving an enormous amount of money, um, for maintenance, which I am all for, but I just think it's gotten to a point where we need to see a, a complete list of what we've done, why we've done it, because it was not part of the budget, and, uh, we are, our budget is running very thin right now, and with, um.
Seventy thousand dollars more?
Um, uh, um, and, and, you know, with the, the contract we just approved, right?
Teacher's contract.
Teacher's contract, so I am, I am starting to get a little concerned.
Raises a follow-up question that I have, is where are we gonna get the money, but, yeah.
This is out of the capital fund, so it's a separate from, fund from your general fund budget.
Okay.
And it's the money that you receive in from impact fees.
So how much is in that fund?
I have no idea.
For some reason, I seem to recall that.
I mean, it was two hundred thousand dollars, uh, there are two commitments, and there are already two projects built, I think, that, um, but I can tell you, he's the rookie.
We just.
Right, 'cause the last board meeting approved.
Forty-eight thousand dollars.
And then, I think that prior to that one, another sixty thousand, so, listen, yeah, we, we, we need to, uh, think about this.
So we're almost exhausted.
This, this fund, though, is, is, it has limitations on its use, the use is, because it's given by people who move in and when they buy a house, is to make sure that it's used for the upkeep of the buildings, that's its only purpose. That's its only purpose. So this falls into line with the fact that we're trying to do work on the buildings electrically.
But we're gonna exhaust the fund, most likely, or come very close to that.
What's in it now?
Trying to get there.
It was a, it was a two hundred thousand we started. We got another hundred thousand that's coming in January.
Yeah.
Another hundred thousand dollars with the impact fees.
I'm gonna remind you that these are safety issues. So what more do you you want on the list? You're gonna get the.
Yeah, I mean.
But there's safety.
Well, yeah, still still Deb. We 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 need to get a good grasp of this. This is a lot of money.
Then we can act, right? We can do. We won't be able to do anything until next month.
Yeah, Bob will have a updated list of what's in the capital fund next month with the November report.
So, uh I'm, yeah, I mean, I hate to put on a safety issue.
Okay. So let us know then.
I mean, if 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 there is a particular issue that has to be fixed between the board meetings, I, you know, let us know so we can have a special meeting. But I I, we need to have itemized lists of what you need to get done.
We have two safety inspection reports that we'll just give you.
Um or, you know, an executive summary if you'd be, um and we need to understand where the money's coming from and.
And they are detailed. The money is there. It is. I think you'll find it is in that account. We have, we have two or three safety reports that are in detail about what they found in the studies. So you can have the reports.
Right.
Okay.
I I I mean, I just, I wanna support this, but I I need to have the information so that I'm making a knowledgeable decision to discharge my fiduciary obligations.
That's fine. I'm I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna push these here. We have the details.
So.
Have there been bids for this work too?
No, this is, these are the documents that establish the the range of what this would cost. Once the fund is approved, then we go out to bid.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, we just say we know this is gonna cost about twenty thousand dollars. Um the the scope of the electrical work, if you looked at that, is a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
I mean, we saw pictures.
That's on the five-year plan.
Well, no, nobody's doubting that this is any or not. It's more, we we just have to be aware of how we use the funds because we have been spending a lot.
No, no, I'm just saying that it's there.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what it's for though. Just so you know, it is for the upkeep of the building.
Okay, so. Okay, so you're gonna get us that information and then we'll put it on for next month unless you feel like there's a
Unless, I mean, I can.
something that needs to be addressed.
I had shown it to Bob the first time, uh Bob Mason, and he thought we should act.
Well, I'm looking at a uh um one of our past um material. And this says that the construction, and I'll tell you from where it is, from what it is, but it says that we have recorded impact fees received in March and the board has a balance now in reserve of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Hundred seventeen.
So.
And that's in March. We're getting another hundred thousand in January.
It was.
Right, but of that hundred and seventeen, cash in hand, we just approved from the last board meeting, how much?
Forty-eight and then the one prior to that, a sixty thousand, so.
So there's less than ten thousand presumably left.
We already have access to the new hundred. That's what.
Oh, we have access to the new hundred.
Yeah, we have it.
Oh, okay.
And what that says too, which is interesting, we are budgeting a hundred projection in revenues. Anything above a hundred, we actually receive. So we're receiving another hundred thousand, meaning that the impact fees were two hundred thousand dollars for Williston. So it's above the projection. We've had years when we got nothing.
There's not burning all at once on the thing.
So we're we're projecting a hundred thousand dollars of revenue. We're doubling that.
Make sure that we're spending it. Best way we can.
Do you have any?
Um you ended last year with a hundred and twenty-five thousand on the fund. You spent a hundred and eighteen so far out of there.
And the projection on the January one is, um it's a hundred because we talked about this.
This is exactly what we were talking about at the beginning with Kyle. I'm just concerned because I think it's really, I I sincerely appreciate the fact that we're being um proactive and we're trying to prevent and upkeep the building that's rapidly coming to um.
It's life.
It's life. However, precisely because our funds are so limited, we just have to be very careful in terms of how we prioritize these events.
Yeah.
This is not in the regular budget. Let's say another, you're not spending regular budget money. We have been. You're gonna see the regular budget, maintenance budget in the red for sure because that's where it's been coming from.
So just.
Paying to around two hundred thousand impact fee fund right now.
Which is that after all the obligations are taken out or?
This is the impact fee fund that has not been transferred over or be transferred over.
How much is it then?
Uh about two hundred fifteen thousand.
The total, so we're getting a hundred and fifteen out of that?
Right.
Yeah, 'cause we show a hundred, so we're getting a difference.
And that cash arrives in January?
That the cash is there now. The board will request the money from the town of Williston. They'll transfer the money in January.
So we don't have cash to utilize to fund these projects until January?
You won't have transferred. You have it in the impact fee fund, but not in the capital fund, correct? Not till the board requests the money from the town of Williston.
So we need to prove it first so that they can go out and ask for the money.
When can they, when can the board request it from the town of Williston?
Normally it's done in December.
December.
Okay, so do we have a a short-term line of credit? If these are truly safety issues that need to be done immediately, do we get that cash from a a line of credit and then we reimburse that line or?
Um I'll I'll have that for you next meeting. You should be okay with capital projections that I did for the school. You did your tax anticipation note by early in July, but I'll make sure that I'll check for next week.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so it'll be on for December.
So we will bring in the other reports.
Okay.
The actual reports.
Okay. Thank you. All right, eight point oh, um a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, confirm next meeting. So um November eighteenth. So we should be all right if we do it November, right? For questions?
Is there any way we could piggyback our regular board meeting after our budget meeting?
Oh, yeah.
It it's it's seemingly difficult for me to, almost, we've got a meeting on eleven twenty.
Got a meeting on November tenth.
We have a meeting on November tenth.
We could do it then.
So just, it seems to be.
Oh, that's, yes, that's a good one.
I'm happy with that. I'm down with that.
Fourth day? The twentieth? Doesn't matter. Either one, as long as we're.
Less meetings.
Taking advantage.
Either one's good for me.
Okay, so we're good on all the dates?
Wait.
So what did we set, decide for the night for our next?
To for November eighteenth?
The twentieth or the tenth?
I say do the twentieth just because there's a lot of stuff that needs to be lined up to get this one ready, right? So to push it out as opposed to early, might be better for Sunday. Would that work?
Wait, so you're talking about changing the meeting? Remember?
Oh, hang on. You know, I apologize. There's a CSS, there's a CSS you can pull into this.
Oh, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but it could be a special one.
Well, we don't have.
Because we have all those budget meetings. Okay, scratch that.
I mean, the budget will be back. The board will be back on November tenth for these hearings and the public meeting, you know, hearing. So you're in session officially. You could take action then if you had all the information.
Oh, I was thinking more broadly, but I think that's a good idea, on on these safety construction issues.
Yeah, we can just bring in the paperwork and show it to you.
Okay, it sounds like a plan.
So wait, so November eighteenth stays?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gotta stay.
It has to stay.
Wow, so in November we meet eleven ten, eleven eighteen and eleven twenty. Holy moly, all right.
Okay. And the other questions, are we all good?
Yes.
Kevin, good? Okay, uh the meeting's adjourned at nine thirty-four.